Is the screen gonna come down?
Yep, all right, and now we are live. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Okay, welcome to the Wednesday, May 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Win.
Leslie, is the screen gonna come down?
Yep, all right, and now we are live. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner La Micah.
Present.
Commissioner Dodson.
Present.
Vice Chair Spalletta.
Present.
Chair Owens.
Present.
For the record, we have a quorum.
Very good. Review of agenda items. If there's an item that has rose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point of the meeting where a vote may be taken, a two-to-three majority vote is required. Has anything come up?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the city council or Planning Commission on the matters within the jurisdiction of the City of Seaside, but not on the agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comment are on specific items that are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have anything for public comment?
I've not received any comments for items that are not already on the agenda. Are there, is there anyone on the phone or on the webinar who would like to participate, speak under public comment? Please raise your hand. I don't see anybody, sir.
Very good. Okay, we'll move, we'll move to approval of minutes of April 1st and April 22nd, 2020.
Chair, I had one comment on the April 1st. I was ill that day, so I should not be shown on here, I don't believe. Although that was a long time ago.
Okay, is it showing you as attended or showing you as absent?
Showing me as, well, let me double check. Shows me as present, and then it shows me as having voted, if I recall. I'm remembering from when I read this earlier today, sorry.
Okay, can we get the minutes amended to that, take Mr. Evans off of the not and not voting?
Yes, sir.
Was there anything else on the minutes that did not, did not happen that night? Okay, seeing none, and we have that corrected. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
Very good. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 See, and opposed, seeing none, so passed. Very good. Okay, we'll move on to business items. A minor use permit, application number MUP 20-01. William Cooy, property owner, and David Vargas applicant are requesting a minor use permit to operate an indoor cannabis manufacturing business within Suite 21 of the professional office buildings, generally located at 911 915 Hillby Avenue in the community, community commercial zoning in accordance with it. Okay, we open it up to staff?
Good evening, Commission. The application before you this evening is a minor use permit for a cannabis manufacturing, and the site, as you noted, is a 911 Hillby Avenue, Suite 21, which is a two-story professional office building. The typically minor use permits are reviewed by the zoning administrator first. However, there is section of the zoning code which allows for the zoning administrator to move an item from the ZA hearing to the Planning Commission. In this case, that was done by the zoning administrator. And kind of the issues that we looked at this is we have a number of comments that were received from the public, which kind of raised the level of transparency that we want to allow for this. And we bring, so therefore, it was determined that it should be brought forward to the Planning Commission for its review of the project. The city's cannabis regulations were adopted on September 21st of 2017, and the regulation is set for governing commercial adult-use cannabis. Oh, is the PowerPoint up, Leslie?
I'm having a problem pulling it up. It'll be up in just a second. I apologize.
Okay, sorry, I was. Well, what I can just, just continue with is that the activities including, for cannabis, include cultivation, dispensaries, manufacturing, research and development, testing, transportation, distribution within the City of Seaside. In this case, this project would be for a type 7 volatile manufacturing extraction, and we'll provide you a floor plan further into the presentation. And in this case, the property is currently in the commercial, community commercial zoning district, which would allow for, again, for manufacturing would be allowed with a use permit in either the community commercial, this, the commercial mixed use, or the heavy commercial zoning districts. So let me wait for the PowerPoint to get up before I go any further.
I do apologize, it is stuck, and it will still take me just a minute. I'm trying to work around it.
Hey, Rick, while Leslie's doing that, I have a quick question. There's no sales at this office, right? It's just manufacturing?
Correct, yes. And the applicant will give you more specifics to the specifics of the operation, the, and the, and the security provided. So, but we'll give you the overview of just the surrounding land uses and the comments that have been received as attachment four that are in the, that are part of the packet.
Rick, while we're waiting, I have a question. It said in the document that was sent to us that there were currently two manufacturing facilities now operating in the city. And I was wondering if you could tell us where they are and what type of building they're in.
Oh, yeah, that's the next thing on the PowerPoint, which I'll just cover that. That was, that would be on the slide, is that we did note in the report that there's six retail cannabis businesses, two of which have cannabis manufacturing components. And those are within the West Broadway, Urban Village area of the city. And then we have some standalone cannabis and that are within the Sonoma Canyon, Dora, and we have some also an existing standalone in West Broadway. So there's two standalone manufacturing businesses that are currently in operation.
Okay, and are they?
Oh, I'm sorry, but the buildings they are in, they are on standalone buildings. So they are not in a, in a multi-tenant building such as what's proposed for this application, which we will go over when we have the PowerPoint to show you the floor plan of the space and the location and the types of businesses that exist within this professional office building. Because there are some comments from some of the tenants within the building that were included as part of attachment four.
Right.
Rick, if it's okay to keep asking some, you know, general questions while we're waiting for Leslie to get set up. In the other examples of manufacturing, what, what kind of zoning is those, are those?
That would be mixed use in the West Broadway Urban Village planning area.
Okay, we got the PowerPoint up, Rick?
Yes, so you can go to slide two, Leslie?
Almost, it just went down. I apologize. This is unbelievable. It won't let me advance. It's not allowing me to, I'm so sorry. This is ridiculous.
Hey, Rick.
It will not let me unshare it. No, I can't. I'm so sorry. This is why we were doing a test today. Thank you, guinea pigs.
It's not open by me, right, Leslie?
No, it's not open by you.
Hey, Rick, do we need the PowerPoint to continue?
Yes, because I think there's going to be some areas on the floor plan that the public would be interested in looking at and what we go over in terms of what's in, in the interior of the space, and that the applicant will also need to kind of provide you in their description of the operations that you'll need that floor plan. What I could just briefly, what I will just summarize for you then while we pull up the floor plan. Again, the building is 911 Hillby Avenue. This is the, Hillby Professional Office. It's going to be a volatile manufacturing, distribution of adult cannabis. It'd be a type 7 closed-loop system. An applicant is going to have approximately five to seven full-time employees. The business would be open 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Saturday. What we'll show you are what's on aerial photo and what surrounds the property is that there's 47 parking spaces. So there's sufficient parking on-site for the, for the, for the business.
Hey, Rick.
There'd be one vehicle would be maintained on-site for the secure transport of cannabis products. Total five parking spaces would be allocated to the business. And we have some photographs that we can demonstrate to you what the, what the off sheet parking lot is on the sides and to the rear.
Hey, Rick, the line is up.
Yes?
The PowerPoint is ready. What slide would you like?
Okay, we can go to slide three. Why don't we, just for the public, why don't we go to slide two, and I'll just kind of briefly go over again what I talked about. Again, we have the cannabis regulations were adopted in September 21st of 2017. And we note there's six retail cannabis businesses allocated to the city, two which also have cannabis manufacturing components. And again, those are freestanding buildings are, they are in buildings which they're sole tenants. There's five manufacturing that have been approved, two of which are currently in operation. Next slide. So this, this proposal, this will be utilizing the tenant space within the site to, with, which the applicant intends to apply for a type 7 volatile manufacturing license from the State of California. Solvents to be used in the closed-loop extraction process include hexane and butane. Products to be manufactured are concentrates. And again, the applicant will give you more specifics on the, on that aspect of the, of the business. There's five to seven full-time employees, again, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Saturday. There'll be one vehicle that will be on-site for secure transport of cannabis, and they have five spaces allocated. And the cannabis product to be manufactured and distributed in this facility will be as follows. There's flowers processed, buds trimmed, concentrates extracted from active components of cannabis, and topical cannabis products such as cream, spray, bombs, and ointments. Next slide. So. Okay, so we have the upper slide is the first floor floor plan. There are professional office uses that are on the first floor. The proposed use will be on the second floor. The square footage on the, on the first floor is 4,212 square feet, and on the second floor, 9,837, total of 14,050. The space that will be used will be in the right corner of the second, upper second floor, and that would be 2,450 square feet, and that use previously was a dentist office. Next slide. So these are the existing businesses which operate within the facility. We have an optometrist. There is an office for legal services for seniors, a seaside dental group, a tax service. There is a dental lab, a insurance office, Passport Health, which is another professional office, a professional office for NCI affiliates, professional office for Athena Occupational Medicine, and an office for a medical group. Next slide. So this would be the floor plan, and what we've labeled, we have, and I put them in the dots so that as the applicant goes through the floor plan, when it's their turn to provide further analysis on the project, they can refer to the dots, so that, so that way if people have a hard time reading the text box, at least the dots, the colored dots will give them an idea of what the area that they're referring to. So there is an extraction booth that we have on the upper left corner. And then going down, they would have a hazardous chemical and storage area. Further to the right, that would be the lobby security. I have identified that they have the common hallway that extends from this area. Further to the left, on the second floor, and just below that is a stairway which accesses from the first floor on Hillby Avenue. Going back to the floor plan, moving to the right, you have a changing room. We'll move up to a blue dot, light blue, which is the lounge break room. Moving to the right, there's a darker blue, which is packaging. There are purple dots now moving down, which are two offices. There is an orange dot below that for vendor room, and then below that in black dot is a finishing product and storage vault room. And then the one area is a storage that is a darker maroon area.
Rick, can you confirm what, what corner of the building we're looking at? Is this the northwest corner of that building?
North, northeast.
Northeast, okay.
Yeah, and as, this is, this is the part of the building that would be on the north side. So if you're on Hillby, this would be on the far right, upper corner.
All right.
And then we have some photographs which I'll go to, I think those would be next. Yeah, you can go to the next slide, and I'll, last, we'll give you further breakdown on the usage of the space that we identified in the floor plan. Now, in the city's cannabis regulations, there is one of the findings that's in the, in the cannabis rules is that cannabis licensee must be located a minimum 600 feet from a K-12 school or youth center. There are two sensitive uses that are located with proximity of the site. The youth center for the city is 1136 Wheeler, which is approximately 800 feet from the project site. And then there's an Auburn Montessori School, which is on Sedol Street, and that's approximately 125 feet from the site. So both those sites are outside the perimeter of what needs to be met for that finding. But I'll just acknowledge, primarily, we have another aerial photo, which is more of a blown-up view of the site. But what I'll just indicate is that from the project site to the east, you have RM residential, which is medium-density residential use. And then we'll show you on the next slide that where the commercial uses are further to the west. Next slide, please. So here in the outline in red, this is the area which is community commercial. And the community commercial continues to stand, extend up Fremont Boulevard as you would progress to the north on hard, past Harcourt. And then pass further as you go down Fremont to the south, again, it's all community commercial. So you can see in the proximity of this area, the project site is in the community commercial area along with the 7-Eleven and the music store that is just above the 7-Eleven. And then we have a beauty salon and the Democrat office and a art studio that extends along that stretch of Fremont towards Harcourt. Across the street is the Wendy's, a fast food restaurant. And then we have a professional office building that's further to that to the east. And then the properties that are on Hillby Avenue to the, to the east are, we have the condominium project that is on top, that is directly abuts the alley to the north of the site. And then going further on Harcourt, there are multifamily residential uses. You have a single-family use that abuts the property, moving down on Hillby. And then those buildings that are condominiums that extend on Hillby further to the east. Then we go to the bottom across Hillby on the south side, and that is a vacant open lot with a single-family home, or two single-family homes that are adjacent to that lot. Next slide, please. So these are site photos. This is a photo taken from Hillby, and this is looking on the east side of the property, looking toward the west. The, the project site is going to be on the back end of this, end of the, of the property, on that northeast corner. The southeast corner is the front, is a front space. You can see that there's an open parking lot, and there are parking spaces which are underneath the building along on this side. And as we show the next photograph, this is the back of the site. This is looking on the alley from where the 7-Eleven is. And this is looking toward the east. You can see that those spaces that are under the building continue to wrap around on that side, as well as additional open parking spaces that abut the alley. Next slide. And then here is the view of the alley looking to the west, and gives you more view of the open parking lot towards Hillby. And then that corner of the building that we see directly closest to us, at that northeast corner, that is the project site, above on the second, on the second story. And then you can see just to the north, you can see some of the condominiums complex that exists on that one property that abuts it directly to the north. And the back of those, of those, of the condominium is the, our townhouse, excuse me, are the garages. Next slide. So these are required findings that we have for our cannabis requirements. Looking at finding number one, this has been met by this, from the standpoint that the project is, is not located within 600 feet of a K-12 or youth center, and that the site is within the community, community commercial zoning district. So it meets the requirements in terms of it to be, continue to be processed and evaluated as a discretionary permit by the City of Seaside. On the second finding, the project will include conditions to require the approval of the security plan from the chief of police, and installation of air filtration systems to mitigate potential odors from manufacturing and processing of cannabis. Additionally, the building department has requested supplemental information regarding the equipment and potential noise and vibration and fumes to be processed under the building permit. Finding number three, the use includes adequate measures to, for, for water use. In that sense, the project will be required to include as condition requiring water fixtures and retrofitting for compliance with water efficiency standards. The findings for four through seven and eight, for the remaining findings, if you can go to the next slide, please. There will, the cannabis development operating agreement, by and between the city and the owner, will specify parameters that the manufacturing process must adhere to in compliance with state law and the city's requirements for security by the police department. And the police department will continue to maintain oversight over the operating agreement. Next slide. These requirements are the city's standard use permit findings. And the City of Seaside has provided in the evidence on the finding number one that the applicant will be required to provide sufficient security measures, both to deter and prevent unauthorized entrance into the facility and eliminate unauthorized loitering outside the facility. On finding two, the City of Seaside has identified in the draft resolution land use elements from the city's general plan, which the project would be consistent with and compatible in terms of abating any nuisances and for the operation to be in substantial compliance with city regulations. On finding three, the proposed cannabis manufacturing facility will meet the economic and jobs housing needs of the current, of the, of the community consistent with the Seaside general plan. On finding four, we've identified in evidence that the project site is served by existing water, wastewater, and electrical infrastructure and facilities with adequate capacity to serve the proposed project. And on finding number five, the proposed conversion of a commercial kit suite to cannabis manufacturing would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare based on the building department's review as per the supplemental information requested in terms to verify that there, that the site will contain the adequate anchoring of the, of materials within the facility, operational facility, and compliance with the fire, with the fire department, and to, in the system that would be to retain and mitigate odors within the project building and within the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide, please. So what we have included as part of the attachment four, we have public comments that were received. There are numerous comments that were received in advance of the meeting. And there also have been additional comments that you received today that have been forwarded to the, to the commission. City staff at this time, if there's any questions for staff, we'll be glad to answer those. Otherwise, we would allow the applicant to now provide you the overview of the project, and then we can come back and answer any additional questions or comments before you open it for public comment.
Yeah, I have.
Anything for staff?
I have one question. The, the 800-foot rule. I'm wondering, is there a definition of what a youth center is? And the reason I ask this is that well within 800 square feet is the Oldemire Center. And that has preschool and after-school care every day during the school year during normal times, obviously. It also has all-day camps during all the various school break weeks and also during the summer. So there are a lot of kids there pretty much the whole year round at various times of the day. I'm wondering, does that make it a youth center? Or is there a definition, a formal definition exclusive from that category?
Okay. The City of Seaside has identified, what we have identified as the youth center is where is the facility that's across Wheeler Street. And.
Oh, I understand. If, if, because this, this is a community center, obviously, Oldemire, but it does a lot of youth center activities there.
Rick, this is Dave Evans. I would, I was, I was also going to ask the same question about Patula Swim Center. Lot of kids going in and out of Patula for a lot of different youth events. And I was going to ask basically the same question. I believe you said that Patula on Wheeler Street is beyond the 600 feet, but Oldemire is well within the 600 feet, and Oldemire is, is sort of the companion youth center facility that is city-run.
Okay. All right, I probably, let me see if I can have, if Kurt Overmeyer, I think, could, could assist me with that definition, because I have to look that up off, off the, our cannabis regulations.
We, we actually don't have a buffer for youth center. We only have a buffer for K through 12 and have approved permit on La Salle that's pretty close to the Boys and Girls Club and to the adult school. And anyway, at this point in time, there's not a buffer for youth centers.
Are you talking La Salle as the reef?
No, there's another manufacturing use that's been approved on La Salle. It has not opened at this time. No, there's another manufacturing use that's been approved on LaSalle. It has not opened at this time. But it, there is an approved, uh, minor use permit on LaSalle.
Uh, that was Playa, Kurt.
Sorry, my fault. It's on Playa. My mistake.
If I may point out on the website for the Oldemire, it does state that it is a preschool program.
The code is for K-12.
Is that how the code was written, Rick? Or didn't we say just, we said schools, I thought?
We, we define schools as K through 12. So in the current code, there is not a way to deny a use permit over, uh, its distance to daycare or, or childcare or youth center.
Well, it has to be, it only is defined as a school if it's covering K through 12, but there's no school in the county that does that.
It doesn't have to be K through 12. It has to be some fraction of that.
Okay, well, the pre-care, or the, the preschool and the after-school care programs are K through five. Most of those kids are going to local elementary school.
Correct, but the, the zoning ordinance defines schools as, uh, a, as a, a public or private learning institution that has traditional K through 12 education. And, uh, daycares don't meet that definition.
Kurt, the, uh, I think the problem that I'm struggling with is that in the evidence, it uses the phrase or youth center. There's, uh, a number of references in the documentation. So if it's strictly K through 12, we need to correct the documentation, uh, for all these resolutions.
I don't disagree.
Is that all you have for, um, for staff commissioners?
If I may, um, can I comment on one of the letters that were sent in?
Um, well, we can wait from when we have, uh, we're going to come back to all of ours. We'll, we'll readdress this. But this is basically anything for staff that you have.
Then I'll wait.
Okay, if I see no other commissioners, uh, signing in to talk, I will turn it over and let the applicant speak on this matter.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We got you.
All right, just to make sure. Uh, good evening, Chair Commissioners and Staff. My name is Peter Brazil. I'm an attorney for JRG Attorneys of Law, and I'm the attorney for the applicant David Vargas on this project. I'm joined by, uh, the project architect Ken Turgen of Wald, Drunkian, Dos, uh, Trin Redder, Redder, also of JRG. And Ray Magano is a consultant to the applicant. They're also available to answer technical questions that may go beyond my knowledge. Um, with respect to, um, what staff just said, we've reviewed the staff report and its findings and recommendations. And, and we support the same, um, what you've just heard presentation-wise is consistent with the staff report as well. Rather than go into a giant run because you've got an idea of what the project is already. I'd rather that myself and my team answer any specific questions that you may have about this. Because it's simply as the presentation sent is a manufacturing and distribution facility, and that is it. That is all it does. There's no retail components. But rather than me just spew out, respe what, um, or reiterate what staff just said. I'd rather address any specific questions that you may have. And to the extent that my architect and others, uh, permitting staff, assistant, or the consultant can assist, will answer those questions as well.
Very good. So we'll start with Commissioner Evans. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Sure, unfortunately, I'm going to have to go back through the packet documents. But one of the things that I was interested in was, there was a reference, looks like page 15 of the packet. Let me look and see. Anyway, it had to do with loitering. And that there would be, uh, some, some actions taken to prevent loitering, both in the building and around the building. And my question was going to be, you know, how successful can an anti-loiter, loitering attempt be? When there's so much public sidewalk and parking lots right around in that area? So that's my first question.
Can you direct me to the specific, I, I want to see what is the context of the loitering reference? I'm looking on page 15 of the packet itself.
And that's what I was looking at. Hang on.
That's okay.
You know, there's 98 pages, so I apologize.
That's okay. I'm trying to locate it as well.
Yeah. Rick or, uh, anybody with staff, remember where that is. You're probably more familiar with the whole thing.
This is reference to, uh, the conditions?
Uh, here it is. Okay, so it's actually at the top of packet page 15. Where the evidence is that the applicant will be required to provide sufficient security measures to both deter and prevent unauthorized interest into the facility and eliminate any unauthorized loitering inside and outside of the facility. And I know that seems to be one of the hot buttons for this particular location. So I'm just curious how we can possibly make a evidentiary statement that we're going to eliminate unauthorized loitering outside of the facility? When there's so much public sidewalk and parking lots.
I think this reference though is in, is to specific clientele of the business itself. Vendors that may be coming in, marketing people or staff, and that's within their purview of control. I don't think they're referencing the general public. That, that's my interpretation of what I'm reading here. And that goes into the staff, or sorry, into the project plans and the, and the business plan. How to maintain, one of the aspects of the security measures that are required under the CDPH and the BCC's guidelines. Are sign-in, sign-out procedures, badge-wearing requirements, these kinds of things to make sure that they're monitoring who comes in and out.
What, where is the access to the lab if somebody wants to go to the lab?
Is it on the front? Are you talking about the specific C1D1 container?
No, to the actual building itself. Where would people, if they're going to work, let's say, work at your lab or just going in?
I believe they ascend through a stairwell. Um, I can't, I have to see the diagram here. Can we bring up the floor plan real quick?
I'm just wondering if they access the stairwell through the Hillby entrance.
They have to be slide six.
Yeah, because there's actually entrances from both sides of the building, Commissioner Dodson. Uh, that's the old Seaside Dental, uh, was there for years and years, but you can get in it through the back from the parking grid, or you can get in it from, from Hillby.
And those are both open access? They're not, um, locked doors?
No, but they will be securely locked for our purposes.
Could you go back one slide, Leslie? Yeah, there. So the bottoms, the, uh, the, the bottom slide shows you the access from the first floor. As you walk into that doorway, you go to the right, and that takes you up a stairway that goes to the second floor. And you can see down the common hallway, there is another stairway which provides you access to the second floor on that end as well. And there is a doorway that you can enter from the parking lot, as you can see on that, um, north side entrance. And then there is third entrance that's also from the parking lot at that northeast corner on the first floor.
Rick, isn't there also an elevator right there?
Hey, yeah, when I walk into the facility, I did not pay attention to the elevator. I apologize.
If you look and see the X right next to the stairs right there, that's the elevator that takes you up to the second floor. My wife worked there for 15 years.
Okay. But there is two stairway entrances on both ends. And then the bottom is the second, as you can see, the top, the bottom floor plan is the area on the second floor where the stairway comes up to.
And with the hazardous chemicals on site, this meets, uh, the, uh, the fire department approves, correct?
That would be, yes, they would have to be in compliance with the California Building Code and Fire Code. And that would include sprinklers for the space. And the applicant, again, they have, they have the architect and the attorney would be the ones that you direct those questions to. They can address those for you this evening.
Is there any way we can get Mr. Turgen to be able to access his mic to speak regarding the fire question that you have?
Yes, of course. One second, please. Mr. Turgen, you're unmuted now.
Excellent. I, I'm, I'm not on camera for some reason. But hi, um, my name is Ken Turgen. I represent. Oops.
You're back, Ken.
You should activate, you can activate your camera now.
In the bottom left-hand corner, Ken, there's a toggle.
Oh, well darn. That's what I looked. So there you go. I'm sorry if I'm not pretty. Uh, Vice Chair Spalata, you look like you're working at a Mac stove. Uh, seriously, you too. Um, so I, I, again, uh, Ken Turgen, I, I've done many projects in the city. I've worked with Rick Medina on multiple projects. I've known him for years. Um, speaking to the building itself, uh, it's your standard tenanted building's got two means of ingress from the second floor. Plus the elevator, as Charo spoke of, uh, near that. It's got the two exits going, one out to the, um, uh, the parking lot in the back and one going to the front, uh, to the public right-of-way. With working with, uh, I, I think what needs to be parsed here a little bit is that the hazardous materials, and I'm going to put that in quotes. Um, is, is, it's, it's support storage for small amounts that are allowed by building code for the fire department. Underneath the F1 use that support the, uh, the unit, the UL-listed unit that's going to be going in there. That is the actual cannabis extraction portion of the building. And, um, because it's a UL-listed unit, the, uh, the fire department approves these based upon, because it's a hazardous use inside the unit. But the unit itself is a C1D1 unit, which is, um, above and beyond what is required for this use. Typically, you would not be able to build a room to house the equipment in a building because of the use. But because it's a UL-listed piece of equipment, so that, that, that has to be said. That unit is actually a piece of equipment that houses the equipment to do the, uh, the, the, the actual operation. Working with the fire department on this, we've already contacted them. They already are aware of this. They understand the sprinkling system. They understand the fire system that is actually installed inside the unit. Um, and it encompasses, it, it basically works with the building code to allow this use within the manufacturing facility, if that makes sense.
Really quick, um, is it, is there going to be a dry system in there? Is it just going to continue to be a wet system?
There, there are actually two, um, and let, let me actually say, there are three systems, uh, that, that are intertwined in here. Um, it's got backup, um, there is, um, redundancy with regards to a dry system that's installed with the unit itself. And a wet system that's hooked up to domestic water that, um, it knows, that, that, the, the unit knows when there's a catastrophe. Uh, and, and I shouldn't use the word when, because there won't be a catastrophe, uh, but everything is contained within the unit. Uh, there are safety precautions. There are, uh, and, and the fire department knows, we, we've shown it on the drawing. It's very hard to explain to layman's terms exactly what this unit does. But, um, it's up the utmost safety because it's a UL-listed unit. It's been tested. It's tried. It's true. I've installed and designed about five of them in the county. One actually in Delray Oaks, two of them actually in Delray Oaks, just up the street from you guys. Um, and no problems whatsoever. In fact, they, they work brilliantly.
You, you mentioned that there is, uh, there's a chemical content with inside the, um, the extraction unit. Is there any excessive chemicals that are to be put into that unit when that run, it runs dry? Where are those kept?
There, there's a, a room just outside that that is for support materials. The building code and the state of California only allows a certain amount of support material to be outside of the unit. And that is mostly its cleaning solutions. Um, it, it, it would be just like if you had a, a dental office. Ironically enough, this was a dental office. So you would have support materials that are still considered hazardous. And hazardous is such a difficult word to really talk about, because, I mean, bleach is hazardous, right? And we have that in our laundry rooms. Um, and if you have bleach and something else together, it's even more hazardous. But it's, it's about how the storage happens. We have to provide MSDS sheets to the building department. And this is one of the requirements that we, as the architectural team, have to provide to the city of Seaside after this process. Which is providing is, uh, all the information for MSDS sheets, which is everything that's stored in that room. The quantities and, um, uh, and where, and I, I've told you where. Inside the unit itself is where the actual volatile, uh, the, the, the butane will be scored. And they're only allowed a certain amount for the operation of what they're doing when they turn over a product. And so once that is done, it gets emptied out and they refill it. And so there's no storage on site other than in that C1D1 unit, which is the, as I said, the UL-listed. It's almost, it's just considered like an oven, if you will. Everything is self-contained within that unit.
And, and the, but the butane is in a fireproof cabinet and everything before it goes into there. It's a
It is, yeah. It, it's in a two-hour cabinet within the unit itself as well. So there's, they, 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 there's so much redundancy within these, the, the operation of these, the, the, these pieces of equipment. Um, that the safeguards are, the, the fire department doesn't want an issue to happen, trust me. The fire department is going to have more issues with a fire, with a wood-burning fireplace. Oven for a, uh, like a pizza place than they would for something like this, because there are so safeguards that state or the, 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 it's, it's a United States thing. It's a, it's a federal ID, uh, with the UL listing. To get that listing, um, requires way more documentation to get this to, to, to work for the jurisdictions.
Commissioners, do you have any more questions for the fire?
I, I still got to finish on mine, if that's okay. I just want, I just want to make a comment on the, uh, the loitering that either we need to rewrite the evidence. You know, this is mostly for staff, I think. Or we can so direct if the rest of the commissioners think so. But the way it reads now, it, it makes it sound like the applicant's going to take care of some loitering outside the facility. And I don't think that's what this, apparently what it's supposed to be saying.
Can I speak to the loitering real quick? Can I speak to the loitering real quick? Uh, it seems that that's something that's a layover from a retail space. Because this is, you know, the only people that are going to be coming to this space are people that are employees. Or people who are coming in that are distributors that are going to be purchasing the product and leaving. So there's no loitering that I can see that's actually going to happen. Um, that happens if you have a retail, uh, dispensary. Um, then you'll have like loitering issues and whatnot, but I, I, I don't, this is a business use. This, this is predominantly their manufacturing and their, their, their product leaves the facility and that is it. And it leaves in batches for dispensaries to have the loitering issue if you
Now, this is going to have significantly less foot travel than the predecessor dentist's office. It's not the nature of a manufacturing facility to have a lot of foot traffic.
Can you bring up the floor plan slide? Is Leslie there?
Well, she's, oh, if she's trying to pull that up, the applicant, I'm sure will know. There's, um, a finished product storage vault room that looks like it's across, uh, what was a hall or into another room or something like that. The, the two walls that, um, join or that, uh, a, a second tenant, it looks like have. Do you know who that tenant is and, and what, what exposure they've got, uh, to getting into that vault, especially at night? Uh, next slide. I think it's, uh, further on, Leslie.
Next one, yeah.
There you go. So you see down in the bottom right-hand, there's, there's two common walls that looks like with another tenant. I'm curious who that tenant is and also what kind of, is it just sheet rock between those? Or is there something else that makes that a vault room?
I can answer that if you would like me to. Does anybody want, I, I can field that.
No, go ahead and answer, please.
Right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Typically, and I'll give you the background on a lot of these facilities and even distribution facilities and dispensaries, all are required to have what's called a finished product storage or a vault room. They're all encompassing the same thing where it's, it's a requirement that the police departments want to see, because you don't want to have predominantly cash business. We know that. You, you can't just kind of put it, let's put a vault in the middle of the room and, and hope that the cash will not get stolen, right? So what, what we end up doing and what has been developed over time is that we have basically all the product storage and your vault and everything is in one spot. It's cambered. It's, it's totally secure. The walls themselves, we actually bolster those up. The interior of this space of that one in particular will be, the drywall will come down. We will be putting up some other security measures inside solid blocking that will make it very difficult to get in. We're required to do specifics to keep the vault and the finished product secure. We will have to do something to those windows that are in that room. We are aware of that. And I haven't fully figured that one out yet, but that's going to be within the building permit purview that we have to deal with. When you enter the space, the, the, there is no public entrance to the space, because it's either you're, you come in through the lobby and the security. That's where you are, an employee. The vendor room is all those little, if, if you see on this the slide, all those little gray triangles represent cameras. You'll note that we didn't put any cameras in the bathroom. We do that on purpose. But cameras are pretty much prevalent everywhere for the security purposes of the business. And to enter the space, a vendor who is someone who's going to be purchasing from this, from, from our client would basically come into that, come towards that vendor door. They know where to go. They would be buzzed in and that vendor room is locked down and they have their cash with them to do their transaction. The finished product comes out of that product room. The cash gets exchanged. The cash goes into the vault room. The vendor leaves. So the, the exchange is very, very quick. Most of the people who are in this space, using this space, the five to seven employees are going to be within north of the vendor room. And, and that is, that is basically it.
Kenneth, a couple of follow-ups on that. I misunderstood. I thought this was a manufacturing-only, so that product would be delivered elsewhere and probably invoices and other. This makes it sound like you've actually got whoever the ultimate retailer is coming in and paying cash for product, and it's, you're going to go into this vault room and get, get that product.
We call it a vendor room because they have people who are picking up the product and actually exchange the, for the vault itself. And I believe that, and, and Peter, you can, you can have to talk to you specifics on that.
And these transactions don't always involve cash. These could have been purchased or the funds transferred electronically, though that is, that's a whole other discussion on how that occurs and if and when it was. But some of these vendors' rooms, vendor rooms will handle cash, but it's not always cash.
Yeah. So what, what, and, and I aired on one thing. It's, it's a little bit different than, than distribution. What they do is the product comes in that they actually do the extraction on. So they have the trim product, which is the, the veg that comes from a farm in bags. It'll come into that vendor room. They purchase that and put it in their storage area, and that's where they, that, that's the product that they bring in. So that's what the purpose of that vendor room is, more than just the distribution.
But, but back to my original question, which is on the vault room. Not knowing who that tenant is and how, how much coverage you're going to have at night, is this all fully monitored or is this just simply a video monitoring system? I, I'm interested in somebody gaining access to that other room, because this is, you know, product that people would want to steal and cutting through drywall or plywood or whatever else you're going to put in there and getting in there. To me, it's a target. So I'm just want to make sure that everybody understands that this thing is fully secure. So that's where I'm going with my question.
Excuse me. This is Gloria Sterns, the Community Development Director. And at this point, I'm going to ask people to just take some caution as we have a discussion here. Because some of our security manners, we push towards our police. And I do have a public meeting going on right now, and some things we like to not fully disclose to the public. So please answer cautiously. Thank you.
All I was going to say is that both state and local, the CDPH and the BCC regulations and your local ordinance have security requirements. They include video surveillance in and out, sign-in, in and out. They need badge requirements for entry in and out. There are locks on all doors, the alarm systems for windows, doors, et cetera. As far as reinforcing that particular room, I would let Ken speak to that. I think he already articulated that they have plans, though they are not finalized on exactly how they're going to handle the removal of the windows and reinforcing that room in particular, which I think is really, Mr. Evans, what you are, are asking about. You are, go ahead.
Once, once we go through the review with the building department, the building department will route this to, to police and police will make comments. And the, the intent is to make that as secure as possible, as required, I should say.
Commissioner Evans, do you have anything else on that?
No, my only other thought would be on the, the extraction booth and the hazardous chemicals. Having that next to another tenant was interesting to me. I would have thought that would have been as far away from other tenants as possible, but if that's the only place you can put that extraction booth and those hazardous chemical, yeah, understanding the bleach analogy. I appreciate that, Kenneth, but they still are hazardous chemicals. So I would have thought farther away would have been better, but you know, that's just a suggestion.
Commissioners, anything else for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So one of the things I noticed is that you have something called a changing room. Can you explain what, what that means? I mean, the only thing I can do is envision, you know, pictures of New Jack City or something and you know, I mean, where are people changing their clothes so that they, they can't sneak out with the material, with the cannabis? Or is it because they have to put on personal protective equipment?
Equipment, no. Lab clothing and similar type of attire, work attire.
It's kind of both, too. I mean, you, you have to safeguard everything. So it's, you, you have a locker in there. You put your personal belongings in. You put on your lab equipment, which would be a cover-up over your clothing, because, you know, that you're, you're, you're doing extraction. There's oils and, and whatnot that you would get on your clothing. You wouldn't want to normally bring home with you. And so the opportunity, and actually the building code requires us for any type of F use, which is, you know, business slash factory or light industrial, it's, you, you, you're required to have an area that they have a, a facility to, you know, a sanitary facility, a locker area and to change their clothing.
Yet, the break room is directly off of the processing room.
I don't have the plan in front of me.
Yeah, it's directly off of the process room. The door to the break room is right off of the room where the oven and the UL thing is. So I'm, I'm just puzzled by that. You've got a special room for them to change clothes and to go through that, to go to the restroom, which is sort of insulated, protected apart from the processing, but you go into the processing room and then you go across the processing room into another door for a break room. So their food and their lunches could be potentially exposed to the oils or the extraction materials or the chemicals that are volatile in there. So I'm just kind of puzzled. It seems incongruent.
Are you sick?
I mean, I see, I see what you're saying and I lost the feed for some reason.
Yeah, maybe you can pull up that floor plan again. I think it's a really good. So the lounge break room is right across from the ovens and it's kind of within the secure area. It's not out with the changing room and the bathroom. So that, that just puzzles me. I understand there's offices that are not part of that processing area. They're kind of around the corner, but the break room is actually closer to the, the chemical materials than the packaging room. You know, so how, how does that work?
Um, I, 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 there we go. Now I found everybody again. So they, they change, they're all working within this space. So just envision people working, I, I mean, they wear uniforms. They, they wear specific uniforms when they, when they're doing their work in here. The lounge and break room is literally just, it's a table with, so they can sit and have their lunch, so that they don't have to leave the facility. It's all placed within the facility. The actual, you know, oils and whatnot would be within that extraction booth if they're working in there and they have facilities to clean their hands. They can come back out and, and go into the changing room and, and, you know, clean their hands off if they have to go to the break room. It's just the standard of, of any, any use like this, that you have a break room off of any of the working areas. I mean, that's just standard to keep your, your employees, you know, working around what they have to do.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I don't know. I've, I've designed and built close to 1,000 homes and you know, you don't put the toilet in the kitchen, right? I mean, you, you separate certain uses because they're not compatible. And you explained that you have a changing room where they need to put coveralls on in order to protect themselves from the chemicals. Then they pass through a door into another area where it's a processing room, and yet they don't have to come back out in order to go eat their lunch. They eat their lunch basically in that same space. It's, it's open to, in fact, directly across from the door of the lounge break room, you know, area are three ovens and the hazardous chemical storage area. So I find, like I said, I find the design incongruent. It seems as though the lounge or break room should be more, more removed, maybe even separated by the door out by the changing room where it's, it's distinct from the processing area where residual chemicals can be on clothes, can be on hands, whatever, you know. In this instance, they got to, they can come out. You said they can wash their hands in the bathroom, but then they got to pass back through the more sensitive area and, and touch door handles and everything else in order to get back to the lounge, in which case they're exposed again. So I'm, that's what I'm asking. Has that not been thought through?
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not quite sure what this has to do with the use permit. This is the owner wanted, and I understand, and I, I do enjoy, I enjoy the, 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 the criticism of this. This is where the, they wanted the lounge and the break area to be, and I just said, okay, fine.
Okay. Well, then let me ask my next question, and maybe this is more, more relevant. What exactly does the extraction booth and the oven do? What is the chemical reaction? What, how are the chemicals used? What is happening in there? Because I looked through the plans and the mechanical specifications and the plans are very detailed. There's high-tech ventilation systems. There's fire suppression systems. I believe the, the dry system that Chair Owens was referring to, are we talking about like an Ansel type of a system?
Sort of, yeah.
This is a very complicated, this is a very complicated, maybe it's a small scale. It's a very complicated chemical manufacturing facility. And there are hazards associated with that. There's hazards of fire. You're the one who actually used the term that, that even though it's not likely if a catastrophe happens. So what that tells me is that these, these facilities have the potential for catastrophe. More than a dentist cooking something, right? You know, cooking a mold for someone's mouth. This facility has the potential for catastrophe by your own words. So what I'm trying to understand is what are the chemical things that are going on in there? How do both the employees and the neighbors need to be protected from that? And I understand that there are police department, you know, and the fire department are going to review the plans and that there are things that are beyond us. But we have a responsibility and one of the primary findings had to do with health and safety. And I want to understand what the health and safety is. So that's why I think it is absolutely relevant if people are eating food right next to chemicals that have the potential to hurt them.
Commissioner Silva, can I speak on this?
Please.
All right. So the building itself, the box, the C1D1 box is that protection. The hazardous chemical storage area doesn't sit in the open there. It is in secured locker containers. They are designed to create that insulation. That's your security wall. If you're suggesting to drop a wall down from the lounge break room and create another door there, that's not a real problem, but the real security in this system is the box itself. The butane that is the solvent that we're using to extract here is in these two containers. It doesn't go anywhere else. It is designed specifically to stay in those two different contained areas. It doesn't get walked around anywhere else in the building.
Okay. So I understand that the extraction booth supports that and that you also have a room called hazardous chemical storage area.
And it has containers within them.
Okay. But then outside of that, there's also, right above the yellow dot on the plan, there are three boxes and those are ovens. Okay. And those are not in either of the spaces that you described as being contained. And, and so what do those ovens do? I'm asking, I'm asking what chemically is going on here and how, you know, what are the hazards? How does the exposure occur? What do we have to be concerned about?
Okay, I, I'll speak to the, the catastrophe thing. You're making me regret using that word. A C1D1 unit is specifically designed to house any problems that would happen. We know that, you know, you're, you're doing an extraction process, which has a distillation process to create what it does is it, it puts the product in. The product comes out as a kind of an oil. And then when that, that is done and it is gone through that distill process, it comes out and goes into these ovens. The ovens are not an oven that you would think of at your house that go up to, you know, degrees. These are low-temp ovens that actually turn that into a wax that then gets put into the packaging and et cetera. So it, it's, it's a specific process that, once it's done in the, 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 the C1D1 unit, the, it is, it is no longer volatile. There's no, there's no issue after that. And then it's inert. And it's, 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 after that process is done, and we can get the client if he wants, if he's, in, in fact, he just texted me, he goes, it's, it's basically a 70-degree oven. It, it basically, it, it solidifies the oil so that they can package it. That's all it does. So the, all the process really happens inside that booth itself. And again, I will apologize for using the word catastrophe, because it's really not a cata, nothing's going to happen. I mean, everything is contained within specific pieces of equipment throughout that process. And, and once it's complete, it comes out, goes into these, these small ovens that, that keep it at a specific temperature. And again, back to the hazardous chemical storage, we have to call it that, even though it's very small amounts of support chemicals for the operation. And yes.
I appreciate that.
If the lounge, if the lounge break room is that much of an issue, we can move the lounge break room over towards where the office is and switch packaging around. I don't have a problem with that.
I really don't. Trying to understand, you know, there, there are terms on here that suggest that there's, you know, there's some serious precautions in place. And, and so my next question, I mean, you know, what are the odors and what are the possibility of odors? There's a certain ventilation system that's in place to deal with odors. What, what, what are those odors? And is that going to be a nuisance to the neighbors? We have both residential neighbors and we have business neighbors. What, what is that? And obviously there's mitigations in place, but what, what do we anticipate?
The main odors you're talking about are terpenes. They're present in all forms of plants and especially in cannabis. I believe we're running a, a charcoal filtration system, and then there's a buffer or scrubber as well. Ken?
Yeah, there, there, there are two inline systems. One is a charcoal filter that gets changed out, that is actually in the inline fan systems within the unit that goes out to, through the roof. It also, we also are required to have what's called air scrubbers on any intake and outtake of mechanical units for the space itself, so no odors come out of the space. The, the odors that are going to come out, as Pete said, were, are terpenes. That's the smell that's going to come out. This isn't like, you're, you're not going to smell like a cultivation site in Salinas. You're not going to smell like plants. That, that's, that's not the smell. It's the odor of the terpenes that, that would be more worrisome. And as I said, we've installed a few of these specifically on, in, in, in And as I said, we've installed a few of these specifically on, in, 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 uh, Delray Oaks, and we've had no complaints.
Okay. And then these, these scrubbers, the air filtration, the extraction booth, the ovens, even though, though there may be 70 degrees. These are mechanized, correct?
Correct.
So do they vibrate? Do they make noise? Do they need to be put on dampeners of any kind so that they don't disrupt the other tenants, both downstairs or, um, side by side?
The only vibrating equipment would be the air compressors that support the, um, the process inside the extraction booth. The extraction booth itself and those pieces of equipment are, are going to be on vibration isolators per. We have to maintain a minimum of 50 SCC on everything.
Okay.
All the noise is contained within the booth itself.
All right. So my last question then is, um. I think I count 30 security cameras. And I understand that one of the conditions of a project like this is obviously you have to meet extraordinary security measures. To satisfy the police, but obviously those are in place because the police are concerned about. Security vulnerabilities associated with this type of facility. Do these facilities attract additional, uh, crime? Do they attract additional, um. Public safety concerns that would not be foreseen in, uh, uh, other uses like a dental office or an insurance office. In, in this area. I mean, obviously there's 30 cameras for a reason. And what do we need to be concerned about? And do the neighbors need to be concerned for the very same reasons?
Okay. So first of all, when you're talking to cannabis industry and you're talking about secure, well, okay. So first of all, the security cameras are mandated by the CDPH and BCC. And they're actually to make sure that the BCC and CFA or the, the CDPH can monitor. The activities within there and make sure they're compliant. That's one of the main attributes of this. It's not just for the security and for outside intruders coming in. It's to monitor the operations in there. I can give you numerous examples that we have to show where waste is stored and how we destroy things and things of this nature. And that's what the cameras are predominantly used for. They can operate for security purposes as well, obviously. The next question you had, had, can you tell me the second part of that? I'm sorry, I forgot. Your second component.
With, with the component was with this many security cameras. Is, is that not some sort of an indicator or sign that neighbors, um, have cause for concern?
Well, first of all, most of the product in here is not what you call end finished product. A lot of people will manufacturers will manufacture oil, which in turn goes to. A, say a commercial kitchen or it goes to a vape, uh, pen production facility and things of this nature. Basically, if you're looking about security problems, you're looking at cultivation sites where processing is completed and retail sites. Retail sites probably the most, I would say, if you were going to gauge them on them. I haven't had problems with any of my manufacturing clients. It just hasn't been an issue, just like labs aren't an issue, um, at least in my experience. As far as for security breaking concerns, which I think is what you're asking, Mr. Silva.
Anything else for, uh, the applicant from commissioners?
Yeah, I have one. On page 44, going back to the hazardous, uh, material, you said that you have 200 pounds of propane and butane. And, um, that's going to be in a gas form. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I figured that's about 46 gallons. How large are your, uh, tanks?
They are, uh, oh gosh, they're, they're, I believe they're. 15 gallon tanks. I have to double check. I don't.
And I don't know on the, on the tank size.
Yeah, I don't recall the tank size, but it's, it's well within the, uh, the, the allowable use or, or the allowable, uh, contents, uh, for, for the space.
Are you happy with that, Mr. Micah? Very good. I have a question, uh, since we're working with propane and say there is some kind of problem. What kind of a, uh, system do you have that removes that much propane? Because believe it or not, if it's a 15 gallon, that, that would put a lot of product on the floor there. Uh, and obviously it would roll through the floor. So what kind of a system do they have in place if, if you have a bad tank that ruptures a relief valve or whatever? What will it do inside this room?
Uh, the HAL unit itself, uh, and, and when we keep saying HAL, it's H A L. It's the, uh, the, the UL listed unit, the, the booth itself. It, it, it acts, it, it is able to remove all volatile contents, uh, if, if there is a problem like what you're talking about. Typically there's not going to be a problem like that. The, 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 the venting and, um, the, the removal of the material is, is tantamount to the UL listing of the unit itself.
Yeah, that, that, that's fine, but I run, I have forklifts at my shop that run on 15 gallon propane tanks. And they are constantly having problems either at a relief valve or at the connection where they make the, uh, quick connector coupled to it. And that's why I was asking what kind of, cause. It, it seems like a lot, awful lot amount of propane, even though you don't think so. And then you add butane to it. And I imagine what you're doing is you're pushing the brute butane through the product. How much pressure is that under when it's going through there?
Uh, that I, I do not know. That's way above my, uh, my, my chemical makeup with that. But I do know that it's, these aren't standard propane tanks. They're not the ones that would be on a forklift or on your barbecue grill at home. They, they're specially tool specifically for equipment. This equipment is fine tuned. It's, it's specific to the distill and the extraction process, uh, with, with, with the, 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 the chemical aspect and how it works through the process. So I, I, I don't think it's going to be like running a forklift where, you know, that a lot of the time you're running a forklift. The reason that those come ajar is because those things are moving around a lot. That, that, that tank of propane or, or the butane that's going to be in there is going to be sitting in a, in a housing that, that, that just basically supplies the, the chemical process.
Yeah. The reason I was asking is you have that machine backed up right next to the wall. And I believe on the other side is actually the dental lab.
Yeah. By the way, the PSI on those are very low on the butane ones. They're between zero and 30.
Zero and 30 PSI?
That's, I'm looking at.
And the. That's a, that's a huge, that's a huge bump, 30 PSI.
I know. It depends on who the manufacturer of the system is. That's, I, 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 we can obviously find out for this particular system, but I do not know.
Yeah, like. I was just curious about, uh, the neighbor that's right next to that machine that, that has propane and butane. Of course, everything that we, uh, we install, we pray to God, we never have a catastrophe with it. But anything mechanical can go wrong at any, any given time is.
Correct. Well, the, the, the separation between that tenant to the left, if I were looking at the plan. Is a minimum, we have to be a minimum, minimum of three feet away. And I think we're three foot 10. In order to gain access around the unit itself. The unit i- in its own right, it, being a C one, D one unit is, is able to contain anything that goes on inside that unit. And that's why listed, and that's why we use them.
Yeah. And that, that's great. I would have loved to seen you put it over where you had the packaging. Cause then that's over all of your stuff. If everybody had a problem, it would only affect your building. But if that machine did have a problem where it sets, it could affect the dental, uh, lab that's right next to them. I'd, I'd be much happier to see that unit sitting over the corner back where you have the packaging. Because like I said, there's no other walls around any other applicant from that building. You, you would have it over in an area where A, you're over the parking below. So there's nothing below you and the outer walls to your own side of the building that you're renting. Is the only person that you would have close to that unit. Should there ever be a problem? Okay, commissioners, anything else for the applicant? This is tough. I'm sorry. At least not. Go ahead.
For the applicant, uh, just, uh, out of curiosity, if, um, I'm just trying to figure out this particular, uh, location, building. Were there any other sites considered?
When this project was brought to me, this was the property, the only property that was, uh, brought to me specifically.
And the reason I'm curious is this is in a shared building as opposed to the other ones that are standalones.
The only one, that was the only buil- building considered when it was brought to him, Mike.
No, I know, I understand, but I think, uh, Chair Spalletta is just trying to voice his, uh, his question regarding that. Um, I have had other manufacturing facilities that have shared walls. Not in, obviously in, in city of Seaside, but. Just for, for the sake of making a point.
It's not. And, uh, uh, with regards to shared walls, what Pete was saying that there is, I mean, the one shared wall, it's three plus feet away, four feet away. The only thing beneath that, uh, C one, D one unit is, uh, the parking. So that there are no tenants beneath that, and that is a requirement. So we have to have the one hour rating behi- beneath it. We're required to have the, um, uh, the, the, uh, the. Level concrete floor beneath it, which we have an inch and a half inch, inch and a half of topping. That, that this is installed on top of. So the, the, the manufacturer in the UL listing will carry through based upon that. We would not be able to install this with a tenant below. That is a fact. A tenant next to it is, is, is not a problem. And especially since the tenant next to it, um, the building code F1 use and a B use at the same. There's no separation required between the two of those, just so you know.
Anything else commissioners for the applicant? Very good. We will move it to open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this? Leslie, can you help us with that?
Absolutely. So we have two people that are calling in. And then I'm going to allow them to talk if each one of them, if anyone wants to make public, I'm going to know you are eligible to do it for up to three minutes. I will start the timer in just one moment. Then it, um. Absolutely. So we have two people that are calling in. And then I'm going to allow them to talk if each one of them, if anyone wants to make. Those who are eligible to do it for up to three minutes. The timer in just one moment.
Hello?
Yes, sir. You're welcome to speak.
Hi, my name is Jim Reinhardt. Uh, I'm a State Farm agent in the building. Um, and I first of all, I'd like to thank the, uh, commissioner and all the planning commissioners, staff and the consultants. One of the things Mr. Brazil talked about, he mentioned about the general public, that the general public can come in. During three or during, uh, through three openings. And that they would have to sign in and receive a badge before they go in. Is he asking me that my clients, my customers? Sign in before they come in and talk about auto insurance and home insurance and life insurance? That's one question. The second thing is that, um, the UL listing that everybody talked about, that Mr. Turgen talked about. The HAL extraction unit, the brochure list actually states in it. That says the C one, D one unit must be installed on a concrete slab.
Not a raised wood floor.
Not a raised wood floor, which is in that unit. In unit 21, it's a wood floor. And then first of all, and second or thirdly, they talked about, um, bleach. It's just as bad, uh, you know, bleach is just as bad as butane or propane. And I do have to agree with Chairman Owens that butane and butane and propane are highly flammable items. Also, uh, a lot of my customers, uh, they're elderly. They take the stairs, they take the elevator and they come in and do business. Also I have three employees. And myself personally, I have asthma. So now I have to worry about my asthma being affected by this unit. I would agree with, um, the vice chair that these should be in a standalone building. In a light industrial manufacturing area, not in a mixed use building.
Of professional.
Of professional offices. Everyone in this office building are professional office people. And now you're introducing a manufacturing facility. So what I'd like to know is how secure can it be when you're bringing up 70 pounds of raw product? Through common hallways where the general public can be. And then taking it to your unit, which I understand may be secured, but the hallways are not secured. Because my customers need access to my business, just like the doctor's office and, uh, the dental lab and everything else. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have another one, Leslie? Leslie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Um, the other person has been unmuted. It doesn't appear they want to speak. So I can read the public comments that have been received via email. Okay. There's the timer. I will set the timer for each one of these. Um, one of them is quite long. So the first one is to whom it may concern. Um, I'm sending this email to express my strong opposition to having a use permit approved to operate an indoor cannabis manufacturing business at 1915. Or sorry, 915 Hillby Avenue. I've been an employee of Jim Reinhardt State Farm agent for six years. And at that location of the building that I work in, it is a professional building that contains other professional businesses. Including a dental lab, a medical doctor, an optometrist and legal aid services for seniors, to name a few. A cannabis manufacturing business would be completely out of place in a professional building. It should be housed in an industrial park that is zoned for manufacturing. I understand there are types of businesses that use volatile solvents. This causes me great concern for my health and welfare. I believe this would cause undue hazard for myself, my coworkers and customers that visit this building on a daily basis. Also, the extraction of marijuana is a dangerous process which poses the threat of fire. Our building does not have a sprinkler system. Lastly, I feel that the business like this in our building would pose many safety and security issues that we currently do not have the resources to deal with. This building does not have a security staff or even a security alarm in the building. I'm strongly opposed to the use permit being approved. I do not wish this cannabis manufacturing business to be operated out of 915 Hillby Avenue, Suite 21. I therefore am asking that you deny this application. Uh, the, the public speaker was Irma Alonso. The next one is from Mary Gamotin. I'm sending this email to express my extreme opposition to having a use permit approved to operate an indoor cannabis manufacturing business at 915 Hillby Avenue, Suite 21. I've been an employee of Jim Reinhardt State Farm agent for 11 years and I like the location of the building that I work in. It's a professional building that contains other professional businesses, including an optometrist, a dental lab, a medical doctor and legal aid for seniors, to name a few. Cannabis man- cannabis manufacturing business would be completely out of place in a professional building. It should be housed in an industrial park that is zoned for manufacturing. Um, actually this is the identical email to the previous one. So note that, um. Ms. Mary Gamotin also echoes what Ms. Alonso said. Okay. The next one and final one we've received via email. I'm going to set the timer for this one. This is from, um, Christine, Ms. Christina Torre. During these unprecedented times of the COVID-19 pandemic, this process of public commenting has been incredibly difficult. It is assumed that everyone has access to the internet in their homes. I do not. I usually use the public like library, which is closed at this time. Viewing of the May 13th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting will hopefully take place at a neighbor's home if he is in good health. With the above said, I feel compelled to send this email to voice my concerns. I received a public hearing notice regarding MUP 20 dash 01 cannabis manufacturing site in the Hillby Professional Building. It's important as a member of the townhome community directly north and just across the Hillby parking lot to understand what is being proposed. In my reading, I was reminded of the Planning Commission mission statement and saw variations of the theme. Quote, "To provide comprehensive planning services to create a balanced and sustainable ci- city. That contributes to a high quality of life for our diverse community." I don't believe that granting the previous mention use permit would indicate the following of the goals in the mission. Statement or be consistent with the general plan if it does consider the residential neighborhood's concern and property owner's comments. This process must be comprehensive, which means including the general public, providing a broad protection to ensure that the concerns be addressed. As mentioned earlier, participating in this process will not be enabled to attend an open meeting. Relying on assumed possessed and accessible technology seems exclusive, difficult and unfair to the general public in this residential neighborhood. This process includes such an important decisions that will be made regarding our future community and how livable it will be. How comprehensive can the public comments be if it's difficult to make them? I have a few concerns. I'm concerned that the Planning Commission may believe that allowing the CBD manufacturing facility business to be permitted and operating out of the Hillby Professional Building will add to a balance. I'm concerned that the Planning Commission may believe that allowing the CBD manufacturing facility business to be permitted and operating out of the Hillby Professional Building will add to a balanced city. How does granting this permit for yet another cannabis manufacturing and/or later retail site provide a balance? With roughly two point miles of the, within roughly two point miles of this location, walking distance, one can buy a myriad of cannabis products. I was told there were already two manufacturing sites and six dispensaries that wherever one could want cannabis wise could acquire. Is there really an honest need for this type of product and business here in Seaside? Seaside is saturated. The public is being served. There is no diversity or new business model here in opening another business of this type. Balance seems to have been reached for this type of business in the city. If you do permit another cannabis business to open, does this create balance with and for the residential neighborhood? I believe it would create even more imbalance. We do not need or want another drug element to be added here in the community. We as a neighborhood are dealing with homeless and camping, camping out under the Hillby Building and around the 7-Eleven at night. This part of the population is not quiet, not clean and off game gets very vocal late at night, perhaps because of alcohol, other drug use or mental health issues. We have drug dealers selling their products in the parking lots of 7-Eleven and the professionally, the Hillby Professional Building. We have lots of diverse visitors passing through who get their drugs of choice and leave their residue in their transient visitor lives, sitting in our driveways, in our yards and in the parking lot. And the email goes on and I will provide it to you as well. Ms. Torre also had sent a previous communication that you received earlier today. So let me double check the email to see if anyone else has commented while we've been open for public comment. Chair Owens, no other written communications have been received.
Very good. So since we've gone through all the public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to commissioners. We'll start with Mr. Silva.
Uh, to the chair, I just had one clarification.
Go ahead.
Um, looking at the zoning code, um, the clarification on the 600 feet is only for K through 12, does not include youth centers. And that for the public's information, that's section 19.02.01.0C. Apologize for that misinformation on the, on the youth center being added to the staff report.
Thank you. While you're up, Rick, one quick question. What is the difference between manufacturing and professional building?
Well, in our zoning code, manufacturing is allowed in the community commercial, CMX and CH. So it doesn't, we don't have any prohibitions that says that it can, it coexists with a professional office building. And so in the evaluation of the use permit and the information that you received this evening, the commission needs to be comfortable that there has been all mitigation of hazardous instances and that the use could be compatible. And that's limited to your land use aspects are odor, noise, vibrations, traffic. These are kind of the aspects that we look at from a, you can also address how the product is brought into sight from the parking lot. These are all instances that would have a physical nature that you would assess in an evaluation of the use permit.
Yeah, because that, that, that was one of my main concerns was how this product is going to get up a common stairwell that is used by the other applicants of that building. It, it just doesn't seem to me that, it should have its private entrance where it can't be intercepted in between. But to go up a stairwell that is a public stairwell just seems like we didn't look at that.
I think I'll leave that now for the commission to, in your debate, in terms of the issues and concerns that you have received this evening.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Silva, would you like to start it off?
Sure thing. And I appreciate Rick clarifying that, that issue on the setbacks. I, I have a great many misgivings about this and I've got concerns for a number of reasons. And I want to be real clear, I am all for business and entrepreneurship. And even though I think we may have too many cannabis facilities in Seaside, I'm all for letting the market decide that. But I do think we have an important role to play in land use. And the land use issue is whether it's compatible in the location that it's at. And so whether it says K to 12, or that doesn't include all of the after school programs that are K through 12 age and the preschoolers. I have a real concern about the proximity of the facility to the Oldemire Center. I also, when I was kind of curious and I was looking at this repeatedly in the staff report, it refers to this as an adult oriented cannabis facility. And it's interesting, we actually have specifications in our zoning code around adult oriented businesses. Unfortunately, the definitions of those relate more to sex trade and it's different. Yet it's, it, it serves the same purpose of separating certain types of businesses that are adult oriented from neighbors and children and surrounding uses that would be impacted negatively by those. And so I think that there's still something we can learn from that. So one of the things that I think is interesting and, and I recognize that we have an incredible team at the city that is trying to do economic growth for our city. And we do not have an industrial zone anywhere in the city of Seaside. I think we only have some like auto, auto manufacturer, not manufacturing, but auto repairs down on like Del Monte. So, so it's a real problem if we want to do industrial uses, and this would be much more suited for an industrial use, we need a zone for that. But this is in the community commercial zone. And let me just read from the code on that. It says, "The CC zone is applied to areas of the city that are intended for retail and service oriented business activities, primarily serving the local community or neighborhood. Permitted land uses may include restaurants, supermarkets, health clubs, offices, retail sales, services, personal services, and neighborhood oriented retail sales." That's what this zone is intended for. Now, it goes on to say that with a minor use permit, cannabis manufacturing is allowed. But I would simply add that that is a discretionary approval. And we as a planning commission are, you know, an appointed board to look at these discretionary issues. And my concern is, is that this would be much better suited if we have to make the allowance for the use within the zone in a standalone building where it doesn't have the potential to negatively impact the neighbors, where it doesn't have the potential to create hazards of, you know, a catastrophic nature potentially, even though unlikely potentially. And, and I'm just using the architect's terms. And I know you're going to regret having said that.
But you said that, but it's, it's not a catastrophe.
But it, but, but these are things that we are charged with in protecting the health and the safety of our community. And so those, those are my principal concerns. If the, if the commission does decide to advance this project, I would strongly urge that we put conditions to move the, the most sensitive equipment to the corner. So it's furthest away from any of the neighbors. And that there be some, some oversight in that design so that it's more well thought out to protect others, not just to advance the profit of the company. So I don't know that I can support this project as it is. And I will, you know, let the other commissioners weigh in with their opinions. But if it does go forward, I would certainly hope that we would condition it on some significant changes that would provide better protections for the neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Evans, you're up next.
Let's forget to unmute. First off, I want to just kind of mirror what Commissioner Silva said as far as, I thought it was an excellent presentation. I, I, I read everything ahead of time and it, the light bulb didn't go on until Rick was presenting. And especially some of the, some of the slides that he, he put together really helped me understand a whole lot more about what was going on. Appreciate the comments from Mr. Brazil and Mr. Turgeon really clarifying a lot of things and I appreciate all that. I'm uncomfortable at this, at this moment in time, for a lot of the reasons. I'll just echo Commissioner Silva, but to me, I'm uncomfortable with a manufacturing process that's involving chemicals and, and frankly, a highly sought after product in many respects. So from a risk management standpoint, I think there's a number of issues, both life safety as well as theft and, and injuries from, from robberies and things like that, that, that are important, I think. And I appreciate that, you know, we can't go into great detail and I apologize in advance for, I apologize for going too deeply into that. But I just thought that those are important concepts to bring up. I'm still uncomfortable with the proximity of Oldemire. I'm not sure about Patullo. It seems like that's still within 600 feet, but I haven't taken a tape measure to it. But, you know, the spirit of K through 12 school, I get. But there's K through 12 kids, both at Oldemire and, and Patullo. And, and they're there Monday through Sunday, you know, as far as I know, or, you know, once we reopen. So that's important to me that that get addressed. There was one item in, in finding number five on page 16 where it talks about supplemental info being provided. And a lot of that dealt with a lot of these, these social environmental aspects around the, the, the office building. So, you know, without that supplemental info, it's a little hard for me to feel comfortable that all of those items have truly been taken care of. I realize, you know, a lot of that falls on the police and the, and the fire department and the building department. But still, I think I would feel more comfortable if I knew a little bit more about how all those stuff, all that supplemental income was going to, info was going to impact it. And, and there was an item, it happens to be on 53 of the packet where it talks about the booth construction and the anchoring. It talks about, you know, non combustible flooring material, ideally 2,500 PSI. Talks about Simpson Strong Ties, you know, I mean, that's heavy duty stuff. And as far as I know, you know, that's what this is calling for in order to meet that UL. I mean, yeah, they can have a UL rating, but it's still got to be installed right. So all that would be important items for me.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We'll move on to Mr. Lamica.
Yeah, pretty much I have to agree with Commissioner Silva and Evans. I have seen a propane tank blow up and that scares me, especially when I'm first reading this, the location. You know, that's my biggest concern is I don't mind having manufacturing of marijuana. It's just that location that just, it doesn't feel right with me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lamica. Mr. Dodson?
Yeah, can I first ask a question of Rick here? And that is, are there any other professional office spaces like this? That is buildings in which there's shared access of several businesses that have any sort of like manufacturing element within them?
Probably not in Seaside. I mean, um, you have the building on 605 Charles. I'm just trying to think of some examples of some office buildings. We don't have a tremendous amount of manufacturing to begin with in the city of Seaside.
Right.
And, um, so I guess I'm going to have to say I cannot think of any site specifically that I can address that question.
I understand we don't have a lot of facility, places that are natural fits for manufacturing the city. But I also realized that we, we issued up to five permits for this type of manufacturing capacity. And this would be the third one to go in, which means there's two others that potentially could be opening. We would in some extent would be setting a precedent here that, you know, as long as you can pass the hurdles that the police department and the fire department have in place to ensure safety, then you can go to, into a professional building. And to me, I, I don't think this is really what we had in mind when we were talking about issuing permits for manufacturing. And I think it's, it's, it possibly can have adverse effects on some of the other businesses that are in that building. And we certainly heard some concerns about that from Mr. Reinhardt in his comments. I also have deep concerns about the, the, the closeness to the Oldemire Center. You know, I, some of my concerns about the safety have been partially addressed by the, the discussions we had about all the, the various ways in which a controlled explosion would not happen. Or if it, not a controlled explosion, but it's explosion that could hurt somebody else could happen. But nonetheless, what's that? I'm sorry.
They would.
Okay. Okay.
No more catastrophes. There's.
Hey, hold on, hold on just one second. Unless one of the commissioner asks for somebody to try it, please let's not do that.
Okay, anything, anything that might be dangerous to other people is what I meant. Okay, obviously, there have been measures put in place so that this is extremely unlikely to happen. However, as we've heard, a lot of people who go to those businesses in that building may not understand all those or have, you know, knowledge of all those measures. And it could affect their businesses. Uh, businesses there got leases when there was no manufacturing business in that building. And now it's changing significantly by having one. So I, you know, much as, I might put the other commissioners on this, much as I would like to support this, I just, there's just too many concerns I have.
So to the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Just, yeah, as a use permit, we did, we've added the cannabis manufacturing as a conditional use in the CC zone. Each use is looked at individually on its own merits. So that's the discretionary process that you're going through now. We do not have a number of manufacturing, a cap, so for instance. So that is basically, we don't have that in our findings to analyze in terms of whether there's too many of these uses. These can be independently requested and you would evaluate it on its merits.
Very good. Thank you.
That's it, Chair.
Are you, are you done, Mr. Dodson?
Yes.
Very good. We'll go to, to Mike. You're next.
Uh, yes, um, very good point from Commissioner Dodson about the precedent. And, and I pretty much echo Commissioner Silva and Evans and Lamica in terms of, um, it was a good presentation. It answered all the questions and safety and with some minor changes, I think it would kind of settle any kind of concerns I have there. However, as my earlier question was, was about location and standalone building. It was simply a question, but it would be an optimal location for, for a manufacturing facility. But as, uh, Chris Silva pointed out, we lack an industrial zone. And, uh, it's, it's a tough call. I'm all for business. I'm just, the, the CC zoning, the proximity, the, the, like they said, the other residents in the buildings concerns and the, the closeness of the residential area. It's, uh, it, it's a tough one. So, um, anyway. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Silva.
So I don't know if this is Rick or Gloria, but usually in the staff reports, you guys will, at the end of the report or at the end of the sort of summary of the report, you guys will say that staff recommends a denial or recommends approval. And it was very conspicuous that in this instance, staff did not make a recommendation. And I just wanted to inquire as to what was the reason for that? That staff didn't take a position either in support or, you know, against the project. And so I'd like to hear from staff on that.
The staff report has a resolution for approval. So if it wasn't explicitly noted in the staff report, it should be noted that the resolution for the approval would note that that would be the recommendation or the action for the commission to take. Because if you do not take a reaction this evening for approval, then the city staff would have to return with a resolution with finding the evidence to support any other alternative recommendation that the commission would provide to staff. Or provide on the record that staff would then bring back and reflect for the. Or provide on the record that staff would then bring back and reflect for the commission's action at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I did see that you had prepared the resolution. It just said in the purpose of the recommendation said it's recommended that we receive and consider and determine whether or not to grant the use permit. So we just, the language staff used was very ambiguous this time. I was just curious about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Silva. Okay, I'll bring it back. Danny's not here, is he, Leslie?
No, he was not able to make the meeting this evening.
Just wanted to make sure. I left him out last time. I don't want to do that again. Okay, my biggest concern is the delivery of the product to get to the upstairs. Obviously, you're going to add concrete to a floor that, I don't know. Hopefully, the city has looked at the engineering of that building to make sure that it can hold the, the weight of that much concrete. Also, I have, I have hesitations. I, I'm in the piping business. And one of the things we don't like is propane. It's a heavy gas. It'll fall to the floor. It's one and a half times the weight of air. So when we have that inside a building that wasn't designed for it, as far as drains and stuff like that, that'll lead it outside because it runs across the floor. I just don't feel good with this. There's just too many open ends with it. Like I said before, I think that, that manufacturing and professional buildings should be kept separate from one another. I wouldn't want to go to my dentist and then, you know, find out that the, something's on the other side of the wall that isn't normal for a professional building. So that's pretty much my comments. I think we could look for a single use building. I don't know what, you know, a lot of, I know like out of Bed, Bed, the Bed, Bed and Beyond that's closed. That building's never, ever got anything that lasts there. I don't know what the, the use for the zoning is there, but I think we could look at other buildings. Thank you. And with that, any other commissioners need to, want anything else to say before I bring it back to commissioners? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move that we deny the project.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The, the motion was to deny?
Yes.
We do need the commission to provide us with, we can go through now and we can, we summarize what your comments were. I mean, I've written some of the comments down, but we need to have something on the record that we reflect back in findings that, that we would bring back with the commission. So some of the things that you talked about incompatible, delivery, the propane, in terms of what Chair Owens brought forth, just need to have, we can just summarize that as part of the motion. So that way that it allows us to bring something back that's reflected in the record.
Mr. Silva, can you add to that, please, since it was your motion?
I'd be happy to restate the motion. I, I move that we deny the project on the basis that it has proximity to a, a K through 12 facility that it is incompatible with neighboring land uses, that it doesn't protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Can we also get
Other commissioners can voice anything to it as well, Chair Owens.
Okay.
To strengthen what you're having on the record.
Right. I'd like to voice that every, every cannabis store that we have, we have a means to back a truck right up to a back door so that it can be offloaded safely without having to exit it and then walk up a public hallway and everything with the, the product to get it there. I'm not sure how much weight as far as what they're going to be bringing in, but one of the comments was quite a bit. So one of my comments would be to, is the, the delivery, how, how it gets from one spot to the other out of the, out of the parking lot. Thank you. Are you there, Rick?
Yes, I'm, I didn't know if anybody else had anything to add.
Okay.
I would just add that also the, the nature of the business seems incompatible with some of the other businesses in the professional building. And because they do share access, it could potentially be harmful to those businesses.
I agree with Commissioner Dodson. So with that now, Rick, we've had a motion and it, it had unanimous ayes. Do you have enough to write your, your paperwork?
Um, yes, we can take what you have and provide you findings and evidence that we bring back for your consideration on June 10th. That's your next regular scheduled meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
And that should be in the motion or in the action. So it's, because we need, we do need to continue it for a specific time and date in order to avoid having to renotice the hearing. If we do that, we, we don't, we have to renotice it.
And I amend the motion to continue it for the purpose of then bringing back the evidence and findings.
On, on the date, June 10th.
On the date of June 10th.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Very good, Rick. It's unanimous. It passed through.
The appeal period will not begin until the adoption of the evidence and findings.
Okay, good, because I don't have the card anyways.
So we can just note for the public that there will be a seven day period of appeal upon the final adoption of the findings and evidence by the planning commission. So based on that, bringing it back on June 10th, that would begin, the appeal period would begin seven days from that date whereby the action could be appealed to the city council.
Very good. I'm trying to get scrolled into where we were with the rest here. So that, that motion is through. You've got what you need, Rick. And it looks like reports from, that's the only item on the agenda today. Correct?
Correct. Ms. Sterns, though, has some, has a comment that she would want to provide to the commission once you've concluded and moved on with, from the public hearing items.
Very good. I'm still trying to get to them. So we have reports from commissioners?
Oh, oh, you know what, I'm, I'm, Chair, I apologize. The next regular scheduled meeting is May 27th. So I would ask if that, we can reflect that in, in, on, on the record. I apologize. I didn't realize that that's the next regular scheduled meeting.
Mr. Silva, you have a problem with that? So we're good with, we're good with that?
That's fine.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, and so we are, reports from commissioners? I would like to know, I have a question for staff, if that's okay. It's not really a report. What, what are they cutting the roads all up and down the, the different streets for? Are they putting something in?
I can speak to that. On Canyon Del Ray, they're doing a sewer, a sanitary sewer replacement project for the Seaside County Sanitation District to increase the sewer capacity. And then down further on Canyon Del Ray, they're doing sewer lateral work, water connections for the McDonald's rebuild. So that's what's happening all along Canyon Del Ray Boulevard.
What about, what about Del Monte, Leslie? By, I think it's by Lexus and Masters. They're cutting big slices out of the road they just paved?
It's my understanding that it's also a sewer capacity issue. We had some flooding that was happening after the previous rainstorms. I know that they're doing some work prior to the new resurfacing, if it's the area I'm thinking of. They're also going to be doing some additional work probably over the, we're at the next city council meeting. We're adopting about $6 million of pavement rehabilitation throughout the city. It's our next phase. We're going to be doing a lot of work over the next, before the fall. So.
Very good. Very good.
I have a question for staff or maybe they could direct me who I could ask us to. What is the height limit of residential flagpole in Seaside?
24 feet. It's 24 feet, isn't it, Rick?
In the height limits under the one section that talks about cupolas, domes and other elements, there is an exemption for height limits related to a flagpole. So we don't have anything specifically in the code that would say somebody could build something more than 24 feet. But we haven't had that instance that I know of.
But don't we have a height limit for everything in a residential area for 24 feet?
That would only speak to the roof line. If there's other elements like on a church building or what, for instance, there's the one monument that's in front of the LDS church that we, we granted a use permit for that went above the 24 foot limit. Those are the type of elements that could go higher than, than, than the 24 feet. And flagpoles are included in that type, in that exemption for height limits.
Very good. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Thanks.
Okay, anything else for staff? Staff, do you have a report?
Hi, planning commissioners. So this is Gloria Sterns. I'm the Community Development Director and I just wanted to speak to you tonight on a few updates and things that you need to know about at City Hall. So as you know, due to the coronavirus, we've had a huge fiscal problem at the city of Seaside. And unfortunately, one of our ways to address that was a lot of cutbacks and that actually involved staffing. So this week we had to lay off staff and I had to lay off community development staff. So we have lost planners and you know and love a lot of our planners because you see them coming before planning commission on a regular basis. But we are down a bunch. I laid off two planners. We have one planner, Mr. Medina, will be taking early retirement. So we only have him through June 30th. So enjoy him while you, while you can. And we are going to continue to just make the best of it. We have a part-time planner who will also be retiring at June 30th. So we will have me as your sole planning staff and we will have a person who works on our CDBG remaining as well. So I just wanted to give you the heads up about how stretched we're going to be to staff this commission. And tomorrow, the city council is having a special meeting. And it would be great if you guys could participate. It's going to be a little early for you. I know you like to have later meetings, but their meeting will be at 5:30 on Thursday night. And they're going to be talking about different ways that they can help businesses. And some of that may involve streamlining processes. Some of it may involve looking at different fees that we charge businesses as well as other ideas. There's a whole packet that's out. And if you have a moment, please just take a look at the packet for the special council meeting that will be held tomorrow, Thursday at 5:30. That will be a Zoom meeting. So everybody can just follow the participation instructions that will be on the packet. But I encourage you to take a look at that because we're going to be looking at how do we go forward in this new capacity that we have. So I just wanted to let you guys know about some of these changes that are going through. So thank you for allowing me the chance to tell you.
Thank you. Rick, anything else for staff?
I know that, that would be it at this time.
Hey, congratulations on your retirement. Same month I'm going out.
Thank you, but it's the next journey. So way too young to stop doing something else. So thank you for the appreciation that you provided. And I appreciate working with that, every one of the commissioners present and past.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, he'll be around for the next meeting, guys. He's not leaving until June. So we've got him for the May one. Anything else before we put in a motion to adjourn? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, so passed. All right, guys, have a good evening and we will see you on the 12th or the, the 10th.
No, that's on May 27th.
Oh, I'm all confused now, Rick. Okay.
Yeah.
No worries.
Thank you.
Have a good one. Leslie?
Yes, sir.
I, I need to get down and sign something with you. Are you going to be around City Hall tomorrow?
Yes, I will. And one thing we should note to everybody that City Hall is now going to be closed on Fridays. That's another impact there's going to be to staff or to public services. So, but I will be there tomorrow and this Friday if you need anything. Okay?
Okay, I will be down probably around 10:00 then to see you.
Sounds great. We'll see you then.
Okay, thanks.
Take care.
Bye, guys.